Pursuant to House Resolution 87 and Rule 18, the Chair declares the House in the Committee of the Whole House on the State of the Union for the Consideration of H.R. 790. The Chair appoints the gentleman from the Northern Mariana Islands, Mr. Sablan, to preside over the Committee of the Whole.
The House is in the Committee of the Whole on the State of the Union for Consideration of H.R. 790, which the Clerk will report by title.
A bill to provide for a pay increase in 2019 for certain civilian employees of the federal government and for other purposes.
Pursuant to the rule, the bill is considered read the first time. The gentleman from Maryland, Mr. Cummings, and the gentleman from Ohio, Mr. Jordan, will each control 30 minutes. The Chair recognizes the gentleman from Maryland.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I yield myself such time as I may consume.
The gentleman is recognized for as much time as he may consume.
Mr. Speaker, I am proud to be an original co-sponsor of H.R. 790, the Federal Civilian Workforce Pay Raise Fairness Act of 2019, along with my fellow colleagues of the local delegation. I want to pay special thanks to Chairman Connally and Majority Leader Hoyer for their leadership on this very important piece of legislation. H.R. 790, as amended, would authorize a 2.6% pay raise for federal civilian workers for 2019, the same raise that our military service members are receiving this year. Historically, Congress has tried to ensure parity in pay increases between federal civilian employees and military service members. This bill would continue this longstanding tradition. The bill would provide the pay raise to federal employees in the competitive and accepted services, blue-collar workers, members of the career senior executive service, and employees in the scientific and senior level positions. The men and women of our civil service deserve the same increase in pay because they have endured so much during the last several years. They were subjected, Mr. Speaker, to repeated and unrelenting attacks on their pay and on their benefits. They've suffered through pay freezes, hiring freezes, higher pension costs, and furloughs due to sequestration and government shutdowns. Since 2011, federal workers have contributed nearly $200 billion to help reduce our country's deficit and to fund other government programs. These hard-working, dedicated federal workers include the 800,000 employees who were furloughed or forced to work without pay for 35 days during the longest shutdown in our great nation's history. The men and women of our civil service were held hostage to political dispute over funding for a border wall that the President had stated over and over again would be paid for by Mexico. There's something wrong with this picture. These include the members of the Coast Guard, TSA screeners, Department of Agriculture workers who help farmers and ranchers, FAA air traffic controllers and safety inspectors, FDA food inspectors, the FBI EPA pollution inspectors, Border Patrol agents, and Secret Service agents. Given all the hardship federal employees have experienced, they deserve a modest pay increase to help make up for the years of freezes, negligible increases, and to help offset the cost of inflation. The pay increase also would help the federal government compete against the private sector to recruit and retain highly qualified candidates to serve the American people. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I reserve the balance of my time.
The gentleman from North Carolina is recognized.
I don't think those are correct numbers. I thank the gentleman, and I thank the Chairman for his words on the importance of making sure that our federal workforce are properly compensated. And indeed, this is an important subject. And I guess, Mr. Chairman, I guess my question here today is fundamentally, if it's so important, then why haven't we had a hearing? Why haven't we had a markup? Why the rush to put this bill on the floor? And not too long ago, my good friend from Maryland, the Chairman of the Committee, would be on this same floor arguing the same thing. Why are we not having a markup? Why are we not going through regular order? Mr. Chairman, I would remind this body that less than 30 days ago, there was a vote on the House floor that said, "We're going to return to regular order. We're going to make sure that every bill goes through the Committee and has a markup and actually has fair debate." And yet, here we are, less than 30 days into this new Congress, and we are putting forth a messaging bill that quite frankly has not been vetted. The amendment process has not come out of oversight and government reform. Excuse me, oversight and reform. The Chairman acknowledges that I am correcting my title here, but I would also say this, and this is no laughing matter. I've been one of the few members on our side of the aisle on this Committee that has actively engaged in trying to make sure that our federal workforce is not only properly compensated, but properly recognized. Mr. Chairman, here's my problem. According to federal workers, over 25% of them believe that raises do not happen based on merit, that everyone gets a raise. And indeed, this bill does that, says just regardless of how you perform, we're going to give everybody the same increase. Now, that same federal workforce went even further to say, one-third of them says, "We don't do enough to get rid of poor performers." And so what message are we sending to the federal workforce here today? We're rushing a bill that has not gone through Committee. We have not provided meaningful amendments that are actually appropriate. And indeed, we have a federal workforce that says they don't get a raise based on merit, on the merits of their work, on the hard work they put forth. And indeed, they're saying a third of the employees are getting compensated regardless of their performance. Now, when we look at that, what message does this body send to the federal workforce? It says, "It doesn't matter what kind of job you do." And I think that that's a terrible message to send. I can tell you, Mr. Chairman, as we look at this bill, and I'm sure we'll debate the merits of this particular piece of legislation, we have the gentleman from Virginia, Mr. Connally here, the gentleman from Maryland, Mr. Cummings, both members that I respect greatly. And yet, this rush to put this messaging bill on the floor does nothing but damage the underlying support that many of us on both sides of the aisle have for the federal workforce. And so I would strongly object to this particular measure. Let's slow it down. Let's go through the appropriate time to make sure that indeed we have a markup, that we have a bill. The Chairman knows full well that federal workers, not only in and around Washington, D.C., but across the nation, deserve our full attention, and this deserves a full debate. And with that, I reserve the balance of my time.
The gentleman reserves. The gentleman from Maryland is recognized.
Thank you very much. I yield myself such time as I may consume. Let me be clear that there are many federal workers who are suffering and who have suffered. And the message that we send to them is we care about them, and we know that they give their blood, they sweat in their tears, over and over again. And so that's one of the messages we send. But with that, Mr. Speaker, I would yield to my distinguished colleague, the Chairman of our Subcommittee on Government Operations, distinguished gentleman from Virginia, Mr. Connally, five minutes.
The gentleman from Virginia is recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I thank my friend, the distinguished new Chairman of the Committee on Oversight and Reform. So proud to call him that. And let me just say, I heard the arguments from my friend from North Carolina, and I know he does care about the federal employees. But his arguments ring a hollow when you support a 35-day shutdown of the federal government. If you believe in regular order, then you never shut down the federal government, nor do you advise the President of the United States to shut down the federal government, nor do you use shutdowns as a tool to get some policy goal achieved. That is never acceptable. It shouldn't be acceptable to us. It's not acceptable to the American people, and it certainly isn't acceptable to the 800,000 federal employees and an equal number of federal contract employees and small business owners who are affected negatively by this shutdown. So it's hard to listen to a lecture about regular order in the midst of that wreckage. And that's what we're trying to do here. It's not a messaging bill to embarrass anybody. It is a bill to try to begin to restore the integrity of respect and dignity to the men and women who served this country. They're called federal employees, and they were innocent victims of political games, as if they were pawns, Mr. Chairman, for a wall. And we're just trying to begin the process of making the whole again. I want to thank the Majority Leader, Mr. Hoyer, for bringing this bill to the floor. The bill would end the current freeze for federal employees recommended by President Trump and provide hard-working civil servants with a 2.6% pay increase matching that for military employees. On the heels of this largest government shutdown in U.S. history and the longest, I believe it's appropriate for the House of Representatives to take up this legislation, to make a statement in the people's body that we do respect. We do respect the work of our civil servants and our federal employees, and that we are prepared to provide concrete measures to do that. During the shutdown, some of these individuals reported to work without knowing when or if they would receive their next paycheck, while others were willing to work but were told they couldn't. Even though the federal government is reopened, most federal employees are still waiting to receive that first paycheck. Under statute, federal civil employees should have received the 2.1% pay increase for 2019. Instead, the recommendation from the White House was zero. This bill represents a pay increase for federal employees above that statutory level, equal to an additional 0.5% over and above the statutory level that would have otherwise been provided. While the House of Representatives passed appropriations bills, the Senate included a 1.9% pay increase for federal employees. The continuing resolution agreed to by the House and Senate did not reverse the President's pay freeze. This bill would. Historically, Congress has tried to ensure parity in pay between federal civilian employees and military service members. This bill would continue the tradition of pay parity, for which I've advocated since I came to Congress 10 years ago. A federal employee pay increase of 2.6% is, in my view, further justified, as the distinguished Chairman of the Committee pointed out, by the hardships just suffered, and those suffered over the last 10 years: three pay freezes, hiring freezes, compensation cuts, benefit cuts. Federal employees are the only group on the planet that have actually contributed to deficit reduction, $200 billion. In nine of the last 10 years, Congress has failed to enact an increase in basic pay consistent with the statute. Not true on the military side, so that's why we're trying to have pay parity. In eight of the last 10 years, basic pay increases trailed increases in the cost of living itself. I want to point out that the legislation in front of us has been endorsed by the American Federation of Government Employees, the National Treasury Employees Union, the National Federation of Federal Employees, the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, the International Federation of Professional and Technical Engineers, the National Federation of Federal Employees, Senior Executive Association, the Federal Managers Association, and the National Active and Retired Federal Employees Group, NARPY. And I would ask unanimous consent that letters of support from these organizations be entered into the record.
That'll be covered by General Leeve.
The bottom line, Mr. Chairman...
And the gentleman's time is expired.
Is federal civil servants...
I grant the gentleman an additional one minute.
The gentleman has an additional one minute.
I thank the distinguished Chairman. The bottom line, Mr. Chairman, is that our federal civil servants are like any other workforce. More than 900,000 of those federal employees earn less than $60,000 a year. They're not rich. They're not living high in the hog, and they deserve and need this adjustment, especially after the longest, most reckless shutdown of the government in American history. I yield back.
The gentleman yields back. The gentleman from North Carolina is recognized.
This gentleman reserves.
I reserve.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recognize the ranking member of the Committee, a champion for the American people, my good friend, the gentleman from Ohio, Mr. Jordan, for as much time as he may consume.
The gentleman is recognized.
I thank, thank you. I thank, Mr. Speaker, I thank the gentleman from North Carolina for his hard work on the Committee in the United States Congress. Here are just a couple of key things to keep in mind. I mean, I'm against this bill. The average yearly pay for a government worker is $85,000. CBO did a study. Those with college degrees who work in the federal government make 21% more than people with college degrees in the private sector. Those without a college degree, 53% more than those in the private sector. So think about what this bill says. Think about what it's saying. All those hard-working taxpayers in the private sector, hey, you're already making less, but now you're going to have more of your tax dollars go to pay people who are already making more money than you to get a raise. How's that fair? How is that even worse? Even worse? Think about what the Democrats are doing on H.R. 1, their signature legislation. H.R. 1, they're saying to those same people who are already making more money than folks in the private sector, they're saying to those private sector taxpayers, hey, guess what? We're not only going to give them a raise, even though they're already making more than you, we're going to give them six paid days to work on campaigns. Six vacation days where they get paid to work on campaigns. And oh, by the way, they may be helping the very candidate you're against. Such a deal. Such a deal for the taxpayers. That's why I'm a no on this bill. I'm thinking about the taxpayers in the 11th District of North Carolina, the 4th District of Ohio, and all across this country. Tell me how that's fair... Oh, I forgot, there's one more thing the Democrats want to do. H.R. 1, they want to make Election Day a holiday, a paid holiday for federal employees. This is not where we need to be. This is not the respect taxpayers deserve. I would urge a no vote, and I appreciate the good work Congressman Meadows is doing on this legislation. Frankly, he's right. We probably should have had a hearing. Probably should have had a hearing and talked about this. Maybe the Democrats didn't want to talk about the fact that people in the private sector are making less with the same kind of education than those who work for the federal government. So with that, Mr. -- well, ranking member, gentleman from North Car... I yield back.
The gentleman from Ohio yields back.
I reserve.
The gentleman from North Carolina reserves. The gentleman from Maryland is recognized.
Thank you very much. I yield, the distinguished gentleman from Maryland, and our Majority Leader, Mr. Hoyer, one minute.
The gentleman, the Majority Leader, is recognized for one minute.
I stand my remarks.
We fought objection.
I am, of course, not shocked that those who wanted to shut down the government, keep it shut, are not, and had federal employees making nothing. I'm not shocked that they don't want to give federal employees a cost of living adjustment. A cost of living adjustment. Now, I could spend a lot of time responding to my friend from Ohio about the qualifications necessary to run NASA and to work in NASA, or the FBI, or CDC, or the very other agencies that require high levels of skills to work. And I'm sure my friend from Ohio has read the government reports from the Council that's charged with the responsibility of determining whether we're paying comparable wages, who say, "No, we're not." As a matter of fact, we're substantially under, if you compare apples to apples, educational requirements, skills requirements, to the private sector, similar requirements. He doesn't mention that because the averages, they sound just much better. Now, of course, the average salary on the Washington Nationals teams is a little higher than that. Why? Because their skill levels are higher than almost anybody else in the country. Madam Speaker, Mr. Speaker, apologize. I want to thank Representative Connally relatively, and Representative Weckstone, for their hard work. I want to thank my friend, the Chairman of the Committee. Representative Connally, of course, has been a longtime advocate of the pay and benefits and retaining and being able to recruit people who have those kinds of skill levels. You better be careful. Some 30 to 40% of our people are getting pretty close or at retirement age, and they're going to say, "You keep shutting them down, and you keep not keeping their salary level." Unlike our salary, which has deteriorated now for 10 years in terms of its purchasing value. But averages are averages. I want to thank my colleagues, and Mr. Connally in particular, has been an outstanding advocate for many federal civilian employees living and working in Northern Virginia, across the national capital region, and indeed around the country. Now, let me disclose, I represent 62,000 federal employees. You're not shocked that I'm for federal employees. But when I was in the state Senate, I represented a miniscule amount of state employees, and I was for paying them comparable wages so that we could hire competent, capable, committed people to serve my constituents. This shutdown just showed what kind of pain is caused. And do you think those high-priced people were in food lines because they wanted to say, "I'm in a food line"? No, sir. They were there because they were not making enough in the Washington metropolitan area and in other areas around the country, because, you know, only less than 20% of the federal employees live in this Washington metropolitan area. The pay freeze President Trump imposed on federal workers have been detrimental to our ability as a nation to recruit and retain the best and brightest citizens to serve in government. Now, very frankly, Abe Polam, a very good friend of mine, he owned the Washington Wizards. He never asked me to play center because I have a disability. I'm six feet, not seven feet tall. And the people he asked, he had to pay a lot of money to because he didn't get them if they didn't. And the people who are running our space program or running NIH, you know, they're just not run-of-the-mill people, frankly, like me. They got extraordinary skills, and we keep shutting them down, we keep not paying them. You're going to have a second-rate government. That's where you're going. You're going to have another opportunity to say, "Shut down is stupid." I hope you join us on that, because it is stupid and costs us $11 billion, according to CBO. After five weeks of an unnecessary, costly, and painful shutdown, the American people have been reminded how critical the work our federal employees perform is to our national security and economic security. Americans were horrified to learn that many civilian federal employees led paycheck to paycheck, as they do. Even a single month's delay of income sent many of them to food pantries and in search of emergency loans. That isn't right. We had for a long time an agreement. We do parity for our military personnel. Now, we pay our military that we put at the point of the spear hazardous duties pay as But our agreement was, look, we're going to make sure that everybody keeps their pay at pretty much a stable level of purchasing power. That's the key. Very frankly, some people in this House are not for raising the minimum wage. The minimum wage has eroded 40% in purchasing power since 1968. Federal employee pay will erode in purchasing power if we don't pass this legislation. Let's not forget that 85% of federal employees live outside the Washington area in some of your districts, even in North Carolina. Those who work hard to keep our country and its people safe deserve to be paid competitively. This does not bring them to competitive pay with the private sector, I tell my friends. I'm proud to represent, as I said, 62,000 of them. I've met many of them over the years. They are wonderful people, dedicated to servicing the nation and the people of our country. They deserve better than to be treated like pawns in political games with shutdowns and pay freezes. Now, the Senate included 1.9%. We included zero, of course, over here. Not surprising. When you don't respect people, you don't necessarily have to treat them as you would treat an employee in your own firm. Federal civilian employees, unlike their counterparts in the military, have been asked to contribute $182 billion over the last 10 years in reduced benefits and pay. $182 billion they've contributed to trying to bring down our debt. Sort of a drop in the bucket when you give yourself $1.5 trillion for some of the wealthiest people in America, you give yourself headroom to create a $1.5 to $2 trillion additional debt to give some of the wealthiest people in America a huge tax cut, but not 2.6% for federal employees. My, no. That scientist at NASA or the FBI agent who has a college degree, maybe a law degree, has to figure out what some of the most dangerous people in America and around the world are doing. No, not 2.6% for them. Ladies and gentlemen, we need to make sure pay is keeping pace with the rising cost of living for those who serve this country in civilian roles as well as those in military roles. They are no less deserving of our gratitude and fair compensation. This bill would ensure that civilian federal employees receive the same, the same 2.6% that all of you voted for on that side of the aisle, for our military personnel. And I honor our military personnel. We should give them that. We should make sure their purchasing power doesn't erode. And by the way, you can talk to military families who also, from time to time, are in food lines. Is that the right way to treat our people who work for our country and our constituents? I urge my colleagues on both sides of the aisle to join us in supporting this bill. In doing so, we can show the hard-working men and women, unlike we showed for 35 days, that we do have respect for them, that we do care about their morale, that we do care about their ability to support themselves and their families. We can show them that we value their contributions and thank them for their important service. I urge my colleagues, at a time of extraordinary trauma among our federal employees, that we show them the gratitude and respect that they've earned and that they deserve. And I yield back the balance of my time.
The gentleman yields his time back.
I reserve.
The gentleman from Maryland... The gentleman from Maryland reserves. Members are reminded to address the remarks to the chair. The gentleman from North Carolina is recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad that you made this admonishment, because some of the comments that were just offered actually seemed to be directed at me from a standpoint of respect. And I would remind the gentleman from Maryland, both the gentlemen from Maryland, that this is one of the individuals who's actually worked in a bipartisan fashion on TPS and a number of things, and the Majority Leader knows that well. I would also say, if we're going to make broad sweeping statements that impugn the motives of individuals, it needs to start with a previous President of the United States, Barack Obama. Because when he froze the federal workforce at zero three different times, I didn't hear the outrage on this House floor, Mr. Chairman, that I'm hearing today. It's somehow always one side of the aisle's fault unless it happens to be their party's president that invokes the freeze. So I would say, Mr. Chairman, we need to make sure that those broad-brush characterizations are not conveyed here on the House floor. And with that, I would, respectfully, I would.
I thank you very much, because you make a good point. When President Obama became president, of course, we were in a deep trough, as the gentleman remembers. It was January of 2009, and we sat around the cabinet table. I was the Majority Leader then as well, and I said, federal employees ought to get no cost of living adjustment, Mr. President. The country is in a deep trough, and many people are hurting in this country, and we should not have a COLA adjustment this year. And I supported it the second year of not having a COLA adjustment, because we were still a problem. And you will not find any record of me standing on this floor saying that we ought to give federal employees a COLA while so many people in the country were struggling and without a job, losing their homes. And so I just wanted to tell the gentleman that when a Democrat was President of the United States, and I told the federal unions, who, all who were supportive of me, look, the country is in trouble, but we're not in trouble now. The president talks about what a great economy we have, what low unemployment we have. So that now I think...
Reclaiming my time.
Now I think is the time to give them that raise.
Reclaiming my time.
I appreciate the gentleman for yielding.
Well, I appreciate the gentleman, but I want to make sure, Mr. Chairman, we correct the record, because the gentleman is correct in 2009 and 2010, but we gave them raises in 2010. The federal pay freezes were 2011, '12, and '13, when the same president was saying everything was going fine. And so I want to remind the gentleman that if we're going to look at history, I think to use your words, let's not use revisionist history.
In those years where we were doing well.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to direct it at you. The same gentleman that's making the argument here today was not on the House floor talking about how evil the president was and how he should not be doing that. And so I just want to make sure that we correct the record here today, and with that, I'll recognize the gentleman from Ohio for as much time as he may consume.
The gentleman from Ohio is recognized.
I thank the chair. I thank the chair. I have the utmost respect for the Majority Leader. In his comments, he said, the shutdown is painful and stupid.
Pursuant to House Resolution 87 and Rule 18, the chair declares the House in committee of the whole House on the State of the Union for further consideration of HR 790. Will the gentleman from the Northern Mariana Islands, Mr. Sablan, kindly resume the chair?
The House is in the committee of the whole House on the State of the Union for the further consideration of HR 790, which the clerk will report by title.
A bill to provide for a pay increase in 2019 for certain civilian employees of the federal government and for other purposes.
When the committee of the whole rose earlier today, a request for a recorded vote on Amendment Number Three, printed in Part B of House Report 116-5, offered by the gentlewoman from Massachusetts, Ms. Trahan, has been postponed. Pursuant to Clause Six of Rule 18, the unfinished business, the request for a recorded vote on Amendment Number Three, printed in Part B of House Report 116-5, by the gentlewoman from Massachusetts, Ms. Trahan, on which further proceedings were postponed and on which the House prevailed by voice vote. The clerk will re-designate the amendment.
Amendment Number Three, printed in Part B of House Report Number 116-5, offered by Mrs. Trahan of Massachusetts.
A recorded vote has been requested. Those in support of the request for a recorded vote will rise and be counted. A sufficient number, having reason, a recorded vote is ordered. Members will record their votes by electronic device. This will be a 15-minute vote.
This is the second and final series of roll call votes in the House for the day, and we're told for the week, members now voting on amendments to a bill that would give a pay increase of 2.6% to civilian federal workers. We could see a vote on a procedural motion attempting to send the pay increase bill back to committee, and then a possible vote on passage. That would all come after this amendment vote brought by Democratic Congresswoman Lori Trahan of Massachusetts, her amendment making clear that IRS employees are included as eligible federal employees under the bill. Following that, members will vote on passage of the resolution they just debated, which acknowledges...
When women are sure change are true...
143, and the nays are 183. The amendment is adopted. There being no further amendments under the rule, the committee rises.
First thing you're going to say is, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Speaker. The committee of the whole on the State of the Union has had under consideration HR 790. Pursuant to House Resolution 87, I report the view as amended by that resolution back to the House with sundry further amendments adopted in the committee of the whole.
The chair of the Committee of the Whole House on the State of the Union reports that the committee has had under consideration the bill, HR 790, and pursuant to House Resolution 87, reports the bill as amended by that resolution back to the House with sundry further amendments adopted in the committee of the whole. Under the rule, the previous question is ordered.